Okay, I think it's ready. At this time, in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification for executive session, a public body may hold a meeting close to the public for one of the following reasons: Discussion of negotiations, incident proposed contract arrangements, and proposed purchase or sale of property, illegal advice or the legal advice relating to pending threat or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims for the position of public agency, and other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. We have litigation update of Davis versus Jasper County Airport matters regarding the removal of fuel tank, contract discussion, lease or purchase of electrode aircraft, tow, laboratory, cart, and personnel, equipment, transport, prison, fire contract, tax map numbers listed in the agenda, and also the airport automated weather observation station, also known as AWAS, contract with Trinity Electric. Also, we have updates on Prospect Project refurb as well. So at this time, we'll call for a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, we will turn to our orders and go into executive session. This time, we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. We now out of executive session. At this time, would you all please join me in a pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer by Pastor Atkins?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, be coming for you. One more time, humble as we do how. Father God, do you think how you want to was last night, both suffered this morning, still closing our right mind, repression, and wanted blood run roaming our veins, causing us to move from one day to another. Father God, we about to go in our meeting, Father God. Father God, around this county, Father God, be active, Father God. Let everyone govern himself according, Father God. But when it all said and done, Father God, we ask you to give us travel and rest so that we go back home, even at the northeast, west, or south, in the direction we should go. We ask all the many blessings of St. Jesus' will that everybody say back.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Atkins. Yes, sir. Good to see everybody here this evening. I want to welcome you. We have Mr. Ho White from the city of Hardyville. Thank you for joining us, Mr. White. It's good to see everybody here. We've got kind of a short agenda, but everything's important. And, oh, I see Mayor Harry Wade. I couldn't see him. Felicia right there. The mayor of Hardyville was this afternoon, too. Welcome, Harry. So at this time, we will call for a motion for approval of the agenda with any additions.
I make a motion that the consent agenda be accepted with the adding of presentation number seven, the treasurer to the presentation on the agenda for brief update.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. So at this time, we will invite our treasurer, Mr. Mike Skinner, up for a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the time, members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for allowing me this time to address yourselves and the public. Thank you Chairman Salas for adding me. I understand that the third floor has been in a state of repair for the past week, and Ms. Simmons was working on a tiny screen. So thank you for making sure this was done. There's been a bit of transition in the office. I now have the responsibility of running. I take the role of Jasper County Treasurer quite seriously. It has been a little over three months, and an update on how we are doing, and maybe more importantly, what we are doing is pretty appropriate. We will first start by addressing the topic of the treasurer's office. I'm going to do this in a two. There's the office, and then the finances that I got into. On July 3rd of this year, I assumed the role as treasurer with no turnover, no operating procedures, no cash, no employees, and no resources available at my disposal. Even getting into the office was an effort in itself. Once in the office, I quickly discovered that I'm a little over my head here. I would like to share just some of the details with you here today, just for the record. We got in there with pretty broken furniture, filthy desks, nasty carpet, online payments and website applications were disconnected completely. There were over 300 voicemails on the phones, DMV connectivity disabled, decal inventory off by over 15,000 decals, inadequate installment program records, no access to PayPal account blocking up thousands and thousands of dollars in online payments in their on that status. Learning that online payments had to be manually uploaded after three weeks had passed, we were behind the curve already. Cash audit in June reconciliation could not be done by two independent law firms. We still have no idea what was being done with state money. Boxes of current and important records were boxed up and moved across town into our storage facility over by the old telephone building. Stacks of bounced checks with zero control and follow procedures available. Office checking account funds transferred closed, and the checkbook shredded. System audits still not completed. They found no systems or internal controls in place to report on. So I actually could go on a little bit longer, but I think you got the picture. I would rather focus on where we are here today. There are a lot of positives to build on. A new team has been hired on, Tony, Alicia, and Mary are all outstanding team players who are excited about what we have been able to achieve in such a short time. They also realize that we have a lot more work to do, and they all look forward to meeting that challenge. We have reinstated the full service teller window with full DMV access. New online processing procedures and credit card vendors have been implemented. A new payment app is in the works, and hopefully, crossing fingers, October 1st, I will roll that out. Cutting PayPal out of the online payment process has saved the county over 94,000 annually in fees. Decal issues have been identified and course corrected. We've worked with the DMV on that. Karen over there has been really great. In the state has actually helped as well. Our documentation has greatly improved. Internal controls for installment, return checks, and refund programs have been initiated, or prior to July 3rd, they were minimal or none at all, according to the auditors we have put in place. That is the office. The county finances are a whole topic entirely. We voted for that. You guys thankfully gave me that program of CashVest. That gives us the ability to critical overview on all our assets in Jasper County, those assets being taxpayer money, to be precise. To get a feel for where we are today, we use the entire 2022 fiscal year as our starting point. Counties across this nation using this program are given a score between 1 and 100 for fiscal responsibility and asset usage. For comparison sakes, we will use our neighboring Beaufort County as a litmus test. Sure, they are a little larger county with a very bigger tax base, but how they use that money has been giving them an overall score of 97, down from 98. She's kind of a little upset about that, but she should get back up there. Jasper County, not so much. Under previous administrations' use of taxpayer money, we here in Jasper County scored a 27. I will say that again, a 27 out of 100 with our asset usage. That is a failure to the taxpayers. The entire fiscal burden fell on their shoulders. To correct this, the CashVest team and I have been busy for these past few weeks. I would like to highlight some of the progress we've made with CashVest. So far, it's brought an estimated 2.01 million net annual benefit to the county and its taxpayers. As of July 31st, 2023, the overall cash position increased by 17.9 million over the year. Stress testing of the county's balances identified 55.5 million that can be invested for 12 months plus without sacrificing the county's ability to meet its expenditure needs. That's 55 million that wasn't being utilized prior. Sharing marketplace benchmark data and net negotiations with the Bank of Low Country resulted in a higher interest rate of 4%, up from .12, an estimated net benefit of 1,259 annually. Sharing marketplace benchmark data and negotiations with South State resulted in a higher interest rate on operating accounts of 2%, up from .07, and a higher interest rate on money market accounts of 4.98%, up from 2, 2.0, an estimated net benefit of 821,600 annually, that's extra money we're getting. In the process of negotiating increased earnings credit rate at South State, so the county's balance offsets even more of our banking fees. So 3+1, we'll be issuing a formal rate quote request based on the stress test data of our investments to identify opportunities for fixed income to protect the county against any future rate, future interest rate volatility. They're not going to stay high, folks. They might come down, who knows? But we will accommodate that. So summarize, it has been a slow and oftentimes painful start to this administration. Truth be told, I feel that Vern Garvin did me a favor by shutting off, packing up, disappearing, disconnecting, or shredding everything that she had done for 20 some odd years. What I have since learned on this July 3rd morning is that this office was working just fine for her. My tax team and I are building something from the ashes we were left with that will work for the taxpayers of this county. There's still a lot of work to be done, and my team and I are excited about the opportunities to improve our tax office for all of us here in the community. Thank you again for this time tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Great report.
Yes, sir.
Doing some good things here, Professor Skinner.
Present questions?
Yeah, that's impressive. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Skinner?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, making us some money.
Yes, sir. I will have, one last, new CashVest report will be unavailable the first meeting of November. If we're doing it in three months.
We appreciate you coming and keeping us updated and letting us know what you're doing. That's good information, and it means a lot to us because that line of communication is trying to make things better is what we're supposed to be doing, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next, we don't have any resolutions. We'll move into number nine, public hearings, ordinances, and action items. Ms. Kim Burgess, public hearing and third reading of ordinance 0-2023-17 to amend Jasper County ordinance for the fiscal year 2023, Jasper County budget to provide for amendments to the budget for carryover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is the, tonight is a public hearing, as well as the third and final reading for the budget amendment ordinance for the lapses, to carry over the lapses funds and to make some correction in the action ordinance. I did make the typographical corrections to the typographical errors that Mr. Kim pointed out last, at the last meeting, and I really, the only other thing is that the scored that amount is 5,611,600 rather than the previous, I think it was like 3.2 or 2.9. So everything's been corrected. You ready for your approval?
Thank you. I guess we'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
This time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address council on these matters, please do so at this time. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice. We will close to public hearing. Ms. Burgess, do you have any questions from the council, Ms. Burgess? People already have this as the third reading. This time, we'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this be the third meeting of the ordinance 2023-17 to amend Jasper County ordinance.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Next, we have Mr. Tetter, consideration of first reading of an ordinance to clarify that provisions of ordinance 0-2023-06 providing that certain properties subject to the development agreement entered into by the county and conduit street partners LLC must be conveyed by properties currently under the developer thereof includes the developer's successors in assignment by recognizing and acknowledging the acquisition may be by an affiliate of CSP provided for the approval of the exhibit inadvertently omitted in matters related thereto. Mr. Tetter?
Thank you, sir. We've had this before, before in clarifying one aspect of it, which was long delays in permitting from the Army Corps of Engineers. We provided an extension of time in an ordinance that we provided at the end of Mr. Zedres and CSP had acquired property by. We've since got further correspondence from the Army Corps showing that we may need to extend the force of one of the amendments in here to other matters related to allow 90 days after receiving the outside agency permits for the acquisition. The other is to clear, one of the other amendments is to clear up discrepancy in development, owner of developer terms between the development agreement and the ordinance, so that it's clear, as you just stated, that conduit street partners may acquire or may be one of its affiliates through an assignment. The last is somehow or the other, the exhibit that was approved, to be approved, which is the form of the assignment that was lost out. This approves that as the form to be used of a full assignment to one of its affiliates and provides for partial assignment down the line if that should occur. I have to answer any questions. We've scheduled a public hearing for October 2nd.
Any questions? Do you not call for a motion for approval, please?
So move.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tetter. Next, we have Ms. Kim Burgess' presentation and consideration of bids for new roofs and various Jasper County buildings, which is a long way.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We had the county advertise for sealed bids for the roof replacement of six Jasper County buildings. Illustrated there is the Chamber of Commerce, probate judge, IT services, probation and parole, family court offices, and the former Clemson Extension Building. The bids were due to the county at 2:00 PM on September 6th. We received four bids timely, although only one of those bids was compliant with the bid requirements. The compliant bid is Cleveland Building Solutions, and their bid was 77,017.12. There were two bidders that were below this particular bid amount, but they were not compliant in that they did not provide the bid bond that was required by the invitation to bid. And in fact, we, there was some clarification that Cleveland Building Solution called me on the 5th and had a question about the bid bond, and I felt like it needed to be clarified, so I issued an addendum on that same date. That addendum was issued through SKEBO, vendor registry, and the Jasper County website. And by using vendor registry, all of the bidders and potential bidders received that addendum. So when they were submitted the next day, and only one had that bid, had that, had the actual bid bond with it, then they were the only ones that were compliant. So the staff would like to recommend to the council to accept the bid proposal submitted by Cleveland Building Solutions LLC in the amount of 77,071.12 and authorize Mr. Foleson to execute any and all necessary documents.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Any questions from council?
No. Best friends, what kind of warranty they give in the building?
Usually, I have to go back to the invitation, but usually it's three years with, there's a warranty, a separate warranty for the asbestos, I mean, not the asbestos, the shingles, sorry, asphalt, and the warranty is usually, here we go, three years labor, and then the 30 years for the actual scenes.
Okay, this time, we'll call for a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Okay, we have no one sign in for public comments. Next, we'll go straight to the administrator's report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll keep this real short. I have one item on my report that I was just a reminder to you about the great conversation, you know, and effort to improve inclusion, diversity, equity, and access that you'll have been provided the information on. We hope that you'll join the Hardyville officials at the rec center on October 17th. And if you need any more information about that, please contact me. I had nothing else to report unless, of course, any of you have any questions of me.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Foleson.
Thank you.
Next, we'll call for a motion for approval about consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the consent agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And next, we have council member comments, and we'll start with Madam Vice Chair, Clark.
Everything is good. Trying to get out of here so I can head to the county. I serve boys from the county that are doing Jasper County scene.
We appreciate you going.
Thank you.
That means I don't have to.
Yeah.
Laborers retired, but I got to work, brother.
Not throwing me off. I'm not retired.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good. And we're at the summit.
Workforce.
On workforce, and we're in a bad way, but to come together, people to fill these jobs that needs to be filled. So we're working together as a region, trying to pull some stuff together. Like I listen to Allen Dale, and I feel so sorry for them, even though we're almost in the same condition. They have a developer coming with a thousand jobs, and they don't have any place for them to stay or the people to fill the jobs. So he got a problem. He has a major problem, and it's all over us, the region, but we're trying to work together to get some training going and whatever, so that we can provide the skills to the people for these jobs that these people are asking for. It's just, it's a whole lot.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Mr. Garvey, any?
Yes.
Pastor Atkins? Okay. Just like to take an opportunity to thank administrator and staff on a lot of the work they've been doing, along with Southern Carolina Alliance and the city of Hardyville. We have some great announcements that will be coming out soon from the Commerce Park there. So we're really excited about that, aren't we, Mr. Mayor? We've got some good stuff happening. So we hope to have some good announcements at 40 years' end. But the Jasper County Chamber of Commerce also has their scholarship golf tournament. I believe that's going to be on November 1st. You'll see some information coming out on that. That's where we take the funds, and we engage each of the county high schools, and their staff selects a recipient, a graduating senior, for those funds to help with their college tuition. tuition, and we'll be hosting that at the Hilton Head Lakes Golf Course in Hardyville. So be looking for that opportunity to come out. It's a lot of fun, a big time. You don't have to golf, you can come out and just be a part of it, but I'll be looking for that, come out as well, so that's about all I have for now. And at this time, I think we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, all in favor, please stand up. Thank you for spending the evening with us. Y'all have a blessed night.